Order and roll call. Deb.
Sorry, Counselor Williams.
Counselor Hansi.
Here.
Counselor Perser.
Here.
Counselor Parrish.
Sure.
Counselor Quigley.
Here.
And Counselor Miller.
Present.
It's the first time in like five years I've caught you off guard. It's a good day. All right. So. I'm going to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence to collect your thoughts and we'll follow that by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic from which it stands, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. With that, we'd need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
First and second, any. All right, Deb.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Quigley. Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. We have no proclamations or presentations tonight, so we're going to head on into public participation and the consent agenda. This portion of our meeting is set aside for city council to listen to comments from the public about items not on tonight's agenda or items that appear on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those for which all conditions or requirements have already been met, and they are typically approved with a single motion without a separate discussion. We welcome and value your input. To help maintain a welcoming, respectful, and productive environment, we ask that there be no clapping, cheering, booing, jeering, or signholding. This helps ensure that everyone, regardless of their viewpoint, feels comfortable sharing their thoughts. Each speaker will have three minutes, and we ask that you begin by stating your full name and address for the record. If you have materials you'd like to share with the council, please hand them to our city clerk, Deb Woods, so that they can be entered into the public record and distributed appropriately. While council will not respond during this portion of the meeting, please know that we are listening, and we appreciate your taking the time to participate in this important process. That I'd like to open up the floor if anybody would like to come up and speak.
My name is Jeffrey Loudon. I live at 1119 Daisy Lane, which is just off of 18 Road in the Sun Rose. I would like to. I don't have a complaint, I have an idea. And Janine and I have been talking about this, so it could be dangerous, you know? And the idea is to make the downtown core a little safer for pedestrians and bicycles. And we don't know what that might entail. You had said that there had been signage up there before, and you don't know if it still exists or not. And also. The walkways could be painted with something that's more visible. I was just down there, and it's pretty deadly at night, but it's all right. I, so I just encourage you to think about, that's the core of our community, I think. The thing that most people see, and it would be great to have it be safer for pedestrians and bicyclists by slowing down traffic and having some sort of signage on the roads, so. And I gave Janine some options, and you actually have some in the city on, forgot where it is now, Sycamore and there's a sign right in the middle of the street. Do you know what I'm talking about? What's the other? Pardon?
And paper.
Paper, yeah. Paper, yeah. I don't think we'd want that, but I thought about, how about having a sign with a dinosaur in it? You know, saying whatever it is, seven miles per hour or something, so. That's all I have, and thank you for your service, and it's a great town, and I think we can become even more pedestrian and bicycle friendly than we are. Thank you. And I'll pass it on actually to Janine, and she can carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak at this time?
I'm Benny Wilson. I live at 1509 Baxter Street in Matt, Colorado. I've been trying to bring up a problem that we're having with the Fruta Police Department. I got evidence of officers violating their body cams, okay? I got a lieutenant peg telling me that these officers don't have to turn these body cams on until they're approaching suspects. I looked into the policy, and the policy states that them's body cams are to be turned on on 911 calls. And if they're not being turned on 911 calls, that's going to be considered as concealing evidence to 911 calls. I got evidence to an officer turning his on after he walked away from the school employees. As he was walking to me, his camera came on. I got the evidence of it. I got his body cam. This is not right. This is violating a lot of problems. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm an auditor. I'm checking into things. I'm not going to let this go. I've tried to bring it up with the chief of police, the lieutenant, the IA. Everybody tells me it's unfounded. Okay, you're telling me it's unfounded. I got evidence that says it ain't. Now I'm going to bring it up to the city council and the mayor to help me please correct this. These cameras have to be turned on on 911 calls, not when they're approaching suspects. I got evidence done to me on it. I would like to get a meeting with the city attorney. I know she's not here. I've been trying to get a hold of her. She hasn't called me back. So I'm bringing this to the city and to our mayor that, hey, there's a problem with the Fruta Police Department violating body cams. I'd like to have a meeting with the council, the chief of police, to let's correct this. I got a channel on YouTube. It's an educational channel. I'm not out to get lawsuits. I might say, I'll sue you, but I'm not out to get lawsuits. I'm not to correct problems, okay? And I'm an auditor, that's what I do, and I'm not going to let this go, Mayor. I'll be here, be here, be here until we get this corrected, okay? So if I could get a meeting with you, the council, city attorney, chief of police, and lieutenant peg, I think it's the IA here in this town, I'd appreciate if y'all could get set up for a meeting to permit me to present my evidence, and let's see if we can correct this. That's all I really got to say. Thank you, I appreciate what y'all do, and this is a beautiful town. I enjoy coming to this town. But when our officers are violating people's rights, it's got to be stopped. People like us, auditors, are coming out, and we're going to start stopping all this because it's not right on us. Thank y'all, I appreciate what y'all doing for listening to me today. Hopefully, we can correct all this. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Benny. Is there anybody else who would like to come up and speak?
My name's Jesse Meese. I live at 1279 Henry's Lane in Loma. Serve on the fire department board, and just want to publicly say thank you guys for the the help and the interaction that we've had. I appreciate your, I'll say, patience as we work through the process. And city staff for the work you've done on this. Appreciate what you guys have done. And I look forward to continuing to kind of grow this relationship, so thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to come and speak? There's not a whole lot of options, so I'm going to look at. All right. With that, I'm going to go ahead and enclose public participation and bring it back to council for the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns on the two items?
No.
Hearing none, I would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as before us.
Second.
I think Erin got the second. We have a first and a second. Any other questions, concerns, or comments? All right, hearing none. Deb?
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Quigley.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
And Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Great, thank you very much. With that, the time is 7:10, and we are going to step out of the city council meeting and adjourn into the housing authority meeting. So with that, Deb, would you please do roll call for the commissioners?
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Hansi.
Here.
Commissioner Perser.
Here.
Commissioner Parrish.
Sure.
Commissioner Quigley.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Great, thank you very much. We have one item for the housing authority, and that's review of budget request. And here to present is the city of Fruta city manager, Shannon Vossen.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners, for the opportunity to present. The 2026 Housing Authority budget that is before you tonight has an economic impact of $255,000 and $100 on top of that. The bulk of that, $200,000, is for our second payment of four to the Oaks redevelopment project on the west side of Fruta. If you remember, this year, we came to terms with the developer to restrict all 62 of those units to 100% of the area median income, and in exchange for that, we are contributing $800,000 over four years to that, so we have 400 that we paid this year. We have 200 that is due once the development receives its certificate of occupancy, which may be next year, it could be the year after, you know, construction timelines can change. But if it does happen next year, we will have it in the budget for next year, and then we have a few additional payments the two years after that. And then after those payments are put through, there'll be a restricted covenant put on the developments which holds that AMI limits until it is sold or transferred to another owner. Other expenses in the Housing Authority Fund is $55,000 for legal expenses. This is something we carry forward each year. We haven't spent a lot of that yet so far, but in general, if we have a project that comes before the Housing Authority or comes before the council, and it does require review from either our city of Fruta city attorney or our special counsel Dalton Kelly, we do actually charge back some of those expenses to the developer. So you'll see on the revenue side, you'll see developer reimbursements, and on the expense side, you'll see the legal fees. The last one is 100 bucks for publishing. We do publish public notice for some resolutions for the Housing Authority, but also for our annual budget, so a little bit of funds to make sure we're consistent with our own guidelines as far as publishing requirements. So the budget before you is the one that is recommended by staff and has been recommended to the city council. So staff formally requests that you approve the recommendation and recommend the current draft to the city council as the Housing Authority. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. With that, bring it back to the commissioners. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on the Housing Authority budget? I have a silly question, which is on the fund balance of the $27,114, is that eligible for interest?
Yeah, yep, it is, yeah. And most of our, between the Housing Authority Funds and all the other city funds, we usually put that in some sort of savings account, whether it's a money market or if it's more funds that can be used long-term, we'll throw it, you know, in a CD or something like that. But we do collect interest earnings on most of our deposits spread throughout the funds, and the interest earnings have been pretty significant on some of the larger funds, but this one, it just has a little bit. So it's not something that I budget each year, but you'll probably see it in the actuals as we move on each year.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the current draft of the 2026 Fruta Housing Authority Budget to the Fruta City Council as part of the city of Fruta's annual budget schedule.
Second. First and second, any other questions, concerns, or comments? All right, seeing none, Deb, would you please call the commissioners?
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hansi.
Yes.
Commissioner Perser.
Yes.
Commissioner Parrish.
Yes.
Commissioner Quigley.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, the time is 7:14, which means we got through a Housing Authority meeting in four minutes, which could be a new record. And then we're going to step back into our council meeting. And with that, we're going into, we have some action items, with the first being Resolution 2025-43, establishing the schedule for fees and charges for the 2026 budget. Shannon Vossen, city manager, you are up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council, for the opportunity to present. The next four resolutions formally adopt the 2026 municipal budget for the city of Fruta that we've been discussing for several months now. You know, as part of our city charter, staff is required to present a budget to council in September. And since we did that at the September workshop, we went over most of our departments, starting with our infrastructure core services, you know, public works, engineering. We also talked about our capital projects, our enterprise funds, our utility services, irrigation water, sewer fund, trash, et cetera. Then we got into personnel and quality of place highlights on that first meeting in November, which discussed our police department, parks and recreation, the Fruta Community Center budget, and then all of the changes regarding personnel that is proposed in 2026. Then we had at our third meeting in all funds overview, but also talked about economic development efforts, marketing promotion efforts, communications, et cetera. So we've been talking about the budget a lot, and tonight's the night that's formally approved. So I actually don't have much to present as far as actual presentations, no PowerPoints. It's actually my sixth one in the last two days because I've been going to each individual department and presenting the budget, and that's been, that's been great. In the afternoon ones, we don't have a lot of questions, but that's all right. That's the afternoons after a break, so everything's been going well, and I know staff feels like the budget is in a really good place. So Resolution 2025-43 is formally adopting the fee schedule for the 2026 fiscal year. Not a whole lot of changes as far as fees. I did outline several of the notable changes in the cover sheet, but kind of just going through the list, no changes to building inspection fees, community development fees, there's no changes, although we did clarify some language that if we do have in excess of three hours' legal review, we will bill that back to the developer, which has always been in our code, but we haven't done it too often. So you'll see kind of scattered throughout the fees and charges chart, though it's more assertive language regarding that. Our development impact fees are all based upon municipal code amendments that most of this council adopted a few years ago, so they are adjusted annually by Consumer Price Index. Indices are provided by the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, or in some cases, the Carroll Department of Transportation, or even the Engineering News Review for our post-impact fees. So some minor changes there between 3% to 5% overall impact fees. But again, that's based upon the code amendment that was approved by the previous council, which included, you know, five members of this current council. Fruta Community Center fees, no changes. We are adding a veteran and active military day pass, so cutting that day pass and membership down by 25% for any veterans or active military members that would like to use the community center. Police Department, we're adding a sex offender registration fee of $75 for initial registration and 25 for annual registration. This is consistent with some state statute that we are allowed to implement these fees. And then utilities, 2% increase for sewer, 5% for trash, and no changes to our irrigation rates. So with that, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor and city council. Always happy to answer questions after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. With that, we'd like to open up to the public for any comments on Resolution 2025-43. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment on Resolution 2025-43 and bring it back to council. All right, so as we look over the schedule of fees and charges, any questions, concerns, or comments?
Thing of just general comment is I really appreciate the budget season that we do have. I think it's very well laid out, and I appreciate all the effort that you and your staff put in to have a good budget that's really looking out and spending taxpayer money wisely, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. Would you need a motion to approve Resolution 2025-43, establishing the fees and charges for the 2026 budget year?
Second.
First and second, last chance. Questions, comments? All right, seeing none. Deb?
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Quigley.
Yes.
Counselor Miller. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
And Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. With that, we're going to slide on into Resolution 2025-44, a resolution adopting the 2026 annual budget, and here to present, still, Shannon Vossen, city manager.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and city council, for the opportunity to present. The resolution before you formally adopts the 2026 annual budget, as has been shared with council and reviewed over the last several meetings. We just updated the draft online, the November draft, and there will be a final draft uploaded once budget is adopted. But the 2026 budget has an overall fiscal impact of $28.2 million overall. Out of that, 25 is in current year revenues, 2 million is in transfers between funds, so transfers, you know, capital projects, Housing Authority Fund, things like that. And use of available funds, our fund balance is $1.1 million, almost all of it on capital equipment or capital projects, which are one-time expenses and allowable uses of those funds. Staff recommends approval of the budget as presented. I did note this at our workshop last week, but there has been one very minor change in the budget since we updated the November draft, and that is that the contingency account, which essentially acts as an account for any unforeseen or unanticipated expenses in our irrigation water, it generally is also just your revenues less your expenses. I did have to make a change for balancing purposes. It was at $1,050 in our last draft. In the final draft and the one before you, it is $1,875, so very minor. Not material, I think, to the budget, but just something to make sure we have a balanced budget that it includes. So just wanted to note that, and of course, happy to answer any questions after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. With that, we'd like to open up to public comment on Resolution 2025-44. Is there anybody that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, going to close public comment and bring it on back to council. All right, it's budget season.
Been a good one, yeah?
Yeah.
We've had plenty of opportunities to ask the questions.
I know, but it's.
Very good about answering and making it clear, so I echo Erin's comments. We appreciate it. I appreciate it very much.
Even short by 100 pages, shorter by 100.
Poor Erin.
It's the only time I've ever seen a budget where the auditors are like, can you make it shorter? Only time I've ever seen that ever happen.
We do have an Erin-specific version, though, that's all 458. If anyone's interested.
Thousand pages.
All the pages.
All right. All right, speak now, forever hold your peace. All right.
Mayor.
Need to, thank you.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-44, adopting the 2026 annual budget.
Second.
First and second, last chance. Deb?
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Counselor Quigley.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Absolutely.
Counselor Williams.
Yep.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Indeed.
Motion passes six zero.
Feel like golf clap.
Oh, there you go. We still got two more.
Yeah, but the big budget.
Oh, yeah, let's work out.
No, but it's the big budget. Started in June, right?
Yeah, we usually start May, June, we have those initial conversations about it, but yeah, then, I mean, it's an effort amongst all staff. I mean, everyone contributes to the narratives that you read for each of the departments. They come up with their goals, they come up with their performance measures. It is definitely a team process. We just kind of get to present it at the end and answer the tough questions. But no, really happy with how it turned out overall. Yeah.
All right, with that, we're going to move into Resolution 2025-45, a resolution appropriating funds for the 2026 annual budget. Who's presenting this? Shannon Vossen is having his vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Now that the budget has been approved, council does need to formally appropriate funds for use. We cannot spend any budget dollars without formal appropriation, so Resolution 2025-45 formally appropriates those as described and detailed out in the resolution. So staff recommends approval and happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you, Shannon. With that, I'd like to open up Resolution 2025-45 for public comment. Boy, this is going. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close it. For a jinxing closing public comment and bring it back to council.
I move to approve Resolution 2025-45, appropriating funds for the 26th fiscal year in accordance with the adopted 2026 annual budget. Second.
All right, first and second. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
Counselor Quigley.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Affirmative.
Counselor Williams.
Yep.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser. Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, next up is Resolution 2025-46, establishing the property tax mill levy for the 2026 budget. Shannon Vossen, our city manager, is surprisingly going to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. This is the last budget-related item as far as adopting the budget. This is a request to formally authorize the city clerk to certify the mill levy of 10.146 mills to the Mesa County Commissioner and the Mesa County Assessor. This has not been changed, and I actually, I cannot tell you when we adopted this property tax mill levy. I think it's been over 40 years. I could be wrong. We cannot find any records of it. But recommending no changes to that, and we generally use that, the property tax, to support our general fund, which provides for essential, you know, quality core government services like police, parks, open space, roads, bridges, all of that. So staff recommends approval of Resolution 2025-46 and making no changes to the current mill levy in the city of Fruta.
All right, with that, I'd like to open it up for public comment on Resolution 2025-46. Anybody like to? All right, I'm going to quickly, I'm going to quickly close public comment on that one and bring it back to council.
Curious what he was going to say.
Like, I will tell you, I don't want to, after 40 some years, I don't want to be the group that says, oh, yes, we're going to change this.
No. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 2025-46, establishing a mill levy assessed on property in Fruta for the 2026 budget year at 10.146 mills for general operations and authorizing the city clerk to certify the mill levy to the Mesa County Commissioners.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? All right, hearing none. Deb?
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi. Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Parrish.
Yes.
And Counselor Quigley.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much, Deb. So our final resolution for the evening is Resolution 2025-47, a resolution of the city of Fruta, council submitting to the qualified electors of, at the city of Fruta at the April 7, 2026 regular election, a ballot issue concerning the increase of the sales and use tax within the city by 0.2%. Dan Karas, our assistant city manager, is here to present. Yes, you probably do. Thank you. All right, for the record, yes, for the record, the time is 7:27. For the perceived conflict of interest, council member Janine Perser is excusing herself from the meeting. All right.
And just to clarify, that is due to her husband serving on the board for the Lower Valley Fire Protection District.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, Dan, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Before you this evening is Resolution 2025-47, which contemplates a public safety sales and use tax ballot measure that would be on the April 7 normal municipal election. In your packet this evening is a cover sheet for this resolution that is crafted based off of the direction that we received from council at our workshop last month, and also a resolution that was signed by the board of Lower Valley Fire Protection District that supports this ballot measure and contemplates the same language that is in the cover sheet and in the resolution, just essentially annotating their support and the consistency with what's before you this evening. Just to give a little bit of background, council discussed this potential public safety sales tax. It's a proposed point two sales and use tax, which would approximately be right around $975,000 annually. It would go to support those, those functions that are listed there for both police and fire and EMS. One nuance that I think is important, just for anyone that is, is listening, or anybody is going to review this as a record, the resolution contemplates some performance metrics, pending whether or not the council moves this resolution forward, which would essentially require us to enter into an MOU with Lower Valley within 30 days of the passage of this resolution. And then within 90 days, assuming that the ballot question was successful. The purpose for that is that you can't spell out all of the The purpose for that is that you can't spell out all of the different mechanics that are associated with how this will function. In the ballot question, obviously, there was, you know, unnecessarily concerns about any particular items that would be important for it to be in the resolution, but how it functions, like kind of how we work together, how the money flows, when it flows, is all going to be a part of that IGA. Again, just this fiscal impact estimated to generate approximately right around $1 million annually in the ballot question. It does say 975. That would begin January 1 of 2027. The revenue would be divided proportionally between the district and the city, less any administrative costs, since we would be distributing the funds. You know, we could accrue those on a regular basis, but nothing that would, would be too excessive. Here's just a kind of more detailed dive on the ballot question, just in general, as far as the sales and use tax increase, gives a, an example of 20 cents for every $100, and then what those funds would be used for. And then also includes the, the kind of canned statement for Tabor authorization to retain and spend revenues. And then, just for the purpose of transparency, the council held a workshop on November 25, where members of the, of the district staff and then also the district board were there. There was obviously conversations back and forth about, about needs and like a level of specificity and obviously the, the MOU and the IGA, and all of those have been baked into this resolution that is before you this evening, which is, brings us to this December 2 at staff. And we certainly were, we heard this at the, at the November 25 meeting, we thought it was important that like the district takes some sort of action, because the sense of partnership was mentioned several times throughout the course of that workshop meeting. And so, you know, that resolution's in your packet, and I think it kind of reflects that they're definitely in support of this, and this is something that is a need for them to maintain service and well into the future. And so many of those things were discussed, and I think that we, you know, reflected the council's direction based off of the conclusion of that meeting. How this would be implemented, again, I already went over this, but just for the mechanics, you know, the draft MOU within 30 days, IGA within 90 days of a successful ballot question before the voters, and then there's some specificity with like what the clerk's role is to perform the election-related actions, and then the notifications to DORA within 15 days of the passage of this resolution. And then here are the options available to council. Approved Resolution 2025-47 as presented, direct staff to revise ballot question or deny resolution. And then there's a recommendation that's in your packet. Just want to make sure it's clear that this resolution doesn't authorize levying of any sales and use tax. It merely brings that question before the person, the April 7 meeting, which is reflected in the cover sheet in the resolution, but just important for the record. That concludes my presentation. Mr. Mayor?
Great, thank you. As the Lower Valley Fire Department is part of this resolution, Chief, would you like to come up and add anything to this presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Matt Katzenberger, the fire chief at Lower Valley Fire. I don't have anything to add to what the assistant city manager presented. The fire district, I'll just reiterate, the fire district is, is excited about the opportunity to strengthen the relationship that we would like to have with the city moving forward. And we're supportive, as stated in the resolution, our board is supportive of the decision of, of the council, but nothing else to add.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to open up Resolution 2025-47 to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and bring it back to council. We had a lot of, describe it as passionate conversation at the workshop around this, the public workshop around this. So, but any last minute questions, thoughts, concerns, or comments?
Nope, I think we got where we needed to go.
So, so it's, it's proposing to put it on a ballot measure to increase sales tax by 0.2%. What is our current sales tax and what will it pass?
Our current city sales tax is 3%. 2% of that goes to the general fund. 1% of that, which was actually the last time that city sales tax was increased, was approved for the construction and debt coverage on the community center. So I believe that was 2008, 2009. So take it to 3.2% if approved by voters.
And what does that make the total sales tax if someone purchases something?
Ooh, I'd have to check with state and everything else.
Yeah, because isn't it like eight something?
Seven?
So it would.
0.9 or whatever it is.
It would make it 8.47 is what our city clerk is sharing, because it's.
That's what it'll be when this goes in, or if, if it.
If approved, yeah.
Okay.
And how does that compare us to the rest of local neighboring communities?
Let me take a look, one second.
Shannon's looking that up.
Oh, so 8.27, which would bring it to 8.47. The city of Grand Junction is 8.66 total. And then I can just look up. It put us a little lower, city of Glenwood Springs, 9.1%. Not the best comparable, but 4.2% from city of Glenwood Springs. So kind of everything is within that eight to nine percent range.
And can you kind of give us a little dialogue on how this came to, how this ballot measures came to be? Please? Certainly, Mayor Protem Hansi. We, we began conversations back in September with the, the fire district, kind of exploring the concept of what a, what a joint sales and use tax ballot question or ballot language would look like. A lot of this came on the heels of the fact that there's been some revisions to the statutes that allow districts to go after sales tax. And so that's a, their function, don't want to speak for, for Lower Valley, but I think it's been generally supported by mostly property tax. And so with the changes to their ability to levy impact fees independent of a city doing it on their behalf or sales tax, they approached the, the city and we started exploring, you know, what that could look like. I, I, you know, I'm not a fan of raising taxes. I think we were taxed to death through multiple layers. I do appreciate that this tax is being proposed for ballot measure for, for safety and not for the whim of, of the ability to raise taxes. So I do appreciate that and respect that. Still gives me, you know, well, it's going on a ballot, which I appreciate that the community can decide. And I do appreciate that we're, we have these agreements that will go in, will go into place here pretty soon. I wish we could get some of them done before. Time did not permit how things went down, but I do appreciate that we can have formal contracts, or so we can have transparency, so we can have clear expectations and understand what's going on with things. So I really appreciate all the hard work that's been done on, and I appreciate the council for our, our discussions, and thank you.
Anything else, Aaron?
No.
I appreciate the process. I appreciate that we in Lower Valley were able to come together to come to an agreement on something that would mutually benefit both of us. So I'm looking forward to sending this off to the community to make a final decision, but I'm hoping that this will open the door for better relationships going forward.
Thank you. With that, would need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-47, a resolution of the city of Fruta, city council submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Fruta at the April 7, 2026 regular election, a ballot issue concerning the increase of the sales and use tax within the city by 0.2%.
We have a first and a second. Any additional questions or comments?
I think one good comment, just to have clarity with is, like, when this ballot goes out, no staff's going to be involved with it going forward once statutory.
Staff can only do education, factual, they cannot.
Correct, yes.
Moat or.
I think that's, I think that's great. And then I think the, the fire union is going to be doing a lot of the spearheading for it, and I think that's appreciated and commendable, and I, I think we'll have a good process.
Thank you.
Staff will be sending out a Tabor notice to every household in Fruta?
How will that be sent out?
I'm sorry?
How will that be sent out?
Mail. US mail, yeah. So that'll probably be addressed in the MOU regarding the cost. I think it was around 3,500, maybe four.
Right. Any other questions or comments before?
Oh, we're not done.
Not done.
She probably heard my voice. Okay.
All right.
Councilor Williams? Sorry.
Their comments. Seeing none, Deb?
Councilor Williams? Councilor Hansi? Councilor Parrish?
Yes.
Councilor Quigley? Councilor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. And for the record, the time is 7:41, and we're going to go retrieve council member Janine before we continue.
Welcome back.
You were that close to getting on top of it. All right. So Janine is back. We're going to continue at the meeting. We have nothing on the administrative agenda, so that leads us right to the city manager's report. Shannon, you are up.
Nope, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Just a few quick updates for this group. So next Tuesday, if anyone is going, I know that the mayor is going, we have the annual holiday party for the Grand Junction Economic Partnership. So if you still want to attend, and we haven't registered you yet, I think if you send over an email to either Katie or I, we can get you registered. We'll probably carpool over around 5:00-ish. I believe it starts at 5:30. It's at Timberline Bank in Grand Junction. We'll probably leave here next Tuesday around 5:00. Also, two weeks from today, we actually have our next board and commission mixer, so that'll be before our regular city council meeting, so around 5:30 on that. So we'll be discussing variety of different things, but one of the big ones that we'll be discussing is cooperation amongst the groups. And if anyone wants to volunteer to help us plan and prepare for the 250, 150 celebration that we are hosting next year as part of the 250th anniversary of the United States and 150-year anniversary of the state of Colorado. So we'll have a formal agenda sent out when that gets closer, but we wanted to make sure that council was aware of those dates, and I'll shoot it over and put it on your calendar, as well as the staff liaison, so they can share with their board members. Final update in our special projects manager is available to answer any more specific questions on this, but a quick update on our alleyway project, the alley beautification project right just north of Peach, adjacent to the Civic Center parking lot. So one of the big kind of goals of that project was to move all of the trash containers and the grease containers out of the alleyway, so we can start making some improvements over there. So trash can removal is scheduled for the week of December 15. Grease bin will be moved as soon as we finalize the plan for transporting the grease for several of the businesses, but that hopefully should be done by the middle of this month. Steve and Ed will be notifying all businesses in person this week, or if you're one shop owner right now. And.
News to me.
Right. And we will continue to work on this, work with Republic, the trash provider, to relocate all of those, and there may even be temporary trash and recycling services provided in the southeast corner of our Mulberry parking lot as we finalize the plan. So working on moving that, and then we have some quotes on Excel and getting electrical service over there as well. So definitely, definitely in the works, and you should be seeing some things starting moving around here in the next couple weeks. That's all I have, but always happy to answer questions on that, or make Steve do the long walk up to the podium to answer any questions.
Well, since he made Janine come in, no, I'm just kidding.
That, that was my fault. I apologize.
I just had a quick question about that. So great job on that, guys. Thank you. I know we've been trying to get it done for a long time. Are we consolidating to one big? Is that the goal, is so that everybody's thrown into the same one?
Yep, yep, and that'll be located in the, yeah, the southeast corner of the new parking lot. So there'll be one dumpster, but also recycling. It'll be a compactor as well, so it'll be compacted, and then we'll have the grease container as well, so people can dispose their grease there. We're also looking into buying things that can help transport the grease, like carts or something like that. So really trying to make sure that this is not too much of a change to the local businesses on Aspen.
Where's everything going?
The southeast corner of the Mulberry parking lot that we purchased.
Southeast, okay. So it's just up, they just, the alley just goes up right down.
Yep, yep, yep. So, yeah, it's a little bit, definitely a little bit of a, a little bit of a further walk, but we figured that'd probably be the best location for it.
What's the reception like from all the business owners right there that?
Well, I think good. Steve, do you want to speak to that?
Steve.
Come on up, Steve.
You almost got away with it.
I don't know.
Trying to think of a quick.
So is that the, is that the corner that's up by the?
Yeah, if there's a.
That's the one.
Yeah, there's a property. Yeah, yep, yep.
Backside.
But right by the alley.
Yep.
The alley going this way.
The closest corner.
So the question was, how's it being received?
By the business.
Yeah, so far, so good. Oh, I'm Steve Martinez, the special projects manager, by the way. Thank you for inviting me up all the way from the back of the room. Everything is going great so far. We thought maybe there was going to be some issues, but none. Everybody's been very receptive.
What's it, what's the next step after we get that moved, Steve?
So the very next step is having luminaires installed on some of the service poles. So.
The what?
Sorry?
Light, lights on the service poles. Yeah, they call them, Excel calls them luminaires, but.
You realize that the lumineers plated the hot tomato?
Yeah. I totally get, that's why I always try to use the term luminaire. So we'll get some, we're going to get a light installed right in that southwest corner. And then we've got, the compactor is actually already ordered. It's been manufactured special for us, so we had to coordinate with the electrical to make sure everything was correct. And then the only thing that we have left to do is kind of, we have to put in a concrete pad, and then eventually we'd like to have an enclosure around the whole thing, too. But we've got to, we got to install a little sump so we can clean up any potential grease spills. There's a few things that we have to work on, but they're all in that, you know, process of building it, and it's going well so far.
And security, like, we'll have secure measures for that?
Yeah, in, in the short term, in the short term, the best we can do is padlock the garbage cans, prevent the public from using them, and provide all the businesses with a key to get in. And long term, we will have a locked enclosure, so only the businesses will be able to access the enclosure, except for when it's time for pickup.
How does it worked in the past? Like, are they paying for their own bins right now?
Yeah, mhm, everybody.
They'll just go to a pool?
Yep. They go into a little co-op. Yeah, a co-op. And there, so basically, everybody's going to kind of pay a similar amount to what they've been paying, whether they're using trash and recycle or just trash. But I'm hoping I can save everybody about 15% off their bill by consolidating.
That's good.
Yeah.
After, and then the next steps after we get all that, except will we start seeing ideas for what you guys?
That's, yeah, that's, that's where the creative juices need to get flowing. Once we see the blank canvas, then I think we can, nice hat.
Thank you, Steve.
Well, that'll be great. I'm excited to see all that happen.
Yeah, some communities have like angel wings on the wall.
Yeah.
I think we should put some pterodactyl wings up.
The homeowner and, I'm not sure if the homeowner is the person who resides in the home right by where actually the trash will be. Have you had a chance to chat with them?
Ed talked to him in person. I haven't spoken to him, but I did send him a really nice, well-written letter. I sent it to all the businesses and, and residents that are adjacent to the parking lot to let them know. It wasn't just about, you know, the trash being in there, but, you know, the, the construction noise and things like that. I kind of encompassed everything in there to say, hey, you know, here's what we're doing. Hopefully, it's not going to be too much, but you might have a little sound, you know, noise.
Any response to it, or?
Nope, no response.
Ed talked to them.
Yeah, Ed has spoken. Yeah, Ed has spoken to him.
That was awesome.
I'm not really sure the extent of the conversation, but I know that he has spoken to him, and, which is one of the reasons why we decided to go ahead and send a letter to everybody, just to make sure that everybody's notified. And then, we're going to go beat feet the rest of the week and make sure that we have the long conversations with all of the business owners downtown. So, we'll swing by the house and knock on the door and just ensure that they're aware and everything, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep, you're welcome. Anything else?
Keep up the good work.
May I be excused? Thanks, you guys.
Get halfway down.
Thinking about it. All right, Shannon, question on the boards and commission get-together. We had talked about doing some education around process. At one point, we had talked about doing that at one of these get-togethers.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're going to. You know, it'd probably either be this one or first quarter of next year, but Siara and Katie and I will work on the agenda and see how much time we do have, and if we do, if time allows, I will probably do it at this one. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Shannon? All right, with that, bringing it on back to council for our reports and actions. And the first one is changed upcoming city council workshop meeting, which, Shannon, do you want to take that one, or?
Yeah, so at our last regular meeting, staff asked if we wanted to cancel the December twenty-third workshop meeting. We don't have a ton scheduled for that meeting. Most of our stuff that we're gonna, we need to work on will probably kick off right at the beginning of the year. So, assuming no conflicts with anyone else, I think staff would recommend that we cancel that workshop to accommodate, you know, holidays.
This might be the easiest consensus we'll ever get. Anybody have any concerns with scheduling the December twenty-third workshop? James, are you sure?
Oh, yes, I'm very sure.
You're the one I was concerned about.
Sure you were.
All right.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, I think you do, don't you? I moved to cancel the Tuesday, December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five city council workshop meeting.
Second.
All right, thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, concerns, pushback? Aaron, James? All right, Deb?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And Counselor Williams?
All right, you shouldn't pass us six-zero. Force this to come. Well, he's just.
He would have been outvoted.
He'd be outvoted.
He should have voted no, just because it wouldn't have mattered.
All right, with that, let's bring on back to council for any reports, action. Amy, I'm going to start with you.
I had our historic preservation meeting yesterday, just kind of gearing up for setting goals for two thousand twenty-six. We reviewed what they had done for two thousand twenty-five. They have quite a few accomplishments, and then, kind of what they would like to do moving forward. I cannot say enough positive things about that group. They're just, they're so fun and just, yeah, I look forward to that meeting every, every month. The trash and car on the railroad spur, I've been getting a whole lot of questions about that. Like, this last week, all of a sudden, and I understand, because it looks really, really gnarly over there. There's like a car. Yeah, and I think it's railroad property, but can you, can we maybe get some just like research on like what? What, is there anything we can do? What has been done?
It is pretty bad.
It's gotten really bad just this last little bit, yeah, because the car's been there a really long time, but all of a sudden, there's just a plethora of trash, significant amount of trash. That's all.
Thank you. Amanda?
No, nothing.
F-Tech is this Thursday, so I don't have anything till after that.
The news is we have one more meeting at the end of the year. Looking forward to hearing about that. No pressure.
Nothing to report this time.
Aaron?
We had a community member that brought up some potential challenges with body cams. Do we have, what's being discussed? Is it just something that you're aware of and that you're working on outside of this meeting?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We've had conversations on this, and actually, Benny and I, we've had meetings, you know, with our lieutenant, with our chief of police as well. Staff is not aware of any, any issues with the body cams, as was stated. You know, our lieutenant did an investigation and looked into it, and they didn't find any wrongdoing on that. But, yeah, we've, we've been in communication often over these last couple months.
Have you seen the evidence that's been suggested that can be submitted?
I have not, no.
Can that be submitted to you at any point and have you?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
That's great. That's all.
Right, real quick on, I don't know the scope. This is a piggyback to, it's not my own, but a piggyback to that. Is that, what is the scope of the police commission board? Like, is that something that they would discuss also? I'm, I don't know. I'm curious.
Bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. I, I am not sure if that is anything that they should be tackling, but if it is within, if it is within their scope, then that would make sense to me, but I don't know if it is. That's why I was asking.
Is that something I should talk to chief about, or is that outside of the scope of that?
And I think this is straight from our charter or municipal code, recommends policy, standard procedures, and limitation to police department and to council. So, it's something that we could discuss, but as I, as I shared earlier, and as staff has looked into, they haven't found any sort of wrongdoing as far as the body cams yet.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Couple questions. I'm going to jump around a little bit, so I apologize. I did not see it, and if I missed it, I apologize. In the future workshop document, housing authority bylaws, that review.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna, we reviewed it a couple workshops ago, or maybe a couple meetings ago, and I think after we got the housing needs assessment adopted by council, we're going to bring that back early next year. Housing needs assessment is scheduled for adoption. That's second meeting in January. There is a thirty-day public comment period to where we will put the current draft of the housing needs assessment on our website, probably within the next week, or to receive public feedback on that, and then, provide that public feedback to councils as we go through the adoption process.
So, then, we're looking at probably mid to late February, realistically, before we can review the housing authority bylaws and make any changes if needed.
Yeah, if you want to incorporate the recommendations of the housing needs assessment into that, yeah.
And I apologize, it may be on that shared document in terms of upcoming stuff, and I may have missed it, so I apologize.
It's, it's, it's not, but we're starting to build out what two thousand twenty-six will look like, so it should be on there shortly.
Great. Thank you for that. On, are we still doing our one-on-one this Thursday?
Yeah, unless.
I thought it's still on my calendar, right? We'll just loop back around on the policy on body cams, if that's all right. We can kind of look at that. And I think that's all I got. So, I would just say, today, did mock interviews at the university with the students. A lot of very, very talented young people out there. Wow. So, I don't know if, in terms of internships, I did mention to a few of them that there may be some opening up within the city.
Yeah, we have council and the budget just adopted a revolving internship in the city manager's office. It's in there mostly just because I need a place to put it, but that could probably be anywhere within the city. We'd fund an intern. I think it'd be great.
I mentioned it to a few of the students.
Great.
Excuse me. So, with that, I got nothing else? Last chance? All right, there is no need for an executive session. The time is seven fifty-nine, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. One hour with a four-minute housing authority meeting.